So, good evening, Mayor Bud, council members, staff. I am Troy Don and I am the President. You have heard of what the applicants have to offer to bring to the council. So now, I think that you gotta put your heads together and think of who do you want to fill that they can see right there. And because why? Because they have a lot to offer to this council. And then, like the title of the character said, if you wanna meet somebody and you wanna go somewhere, you better wake up and pay attention. Because they have a lot to offer. I've been hearing what some of the candidates were saying, and I think they brought up some good points. We try to bring in education through our technology, businesses, and I feel these are all the good things that we want to have in Richmond. So, I'm thinking that tonight is the night that this council will appoint someone to fill that they can see. Because if this keeps going any further, it feels like elections, oh no, that's not gonna happen. Like the spike we always tell people, do the right thing. And think with your conscience of who you want to fill in that seat. So, with that said, I'll be happy to pass my time. Thank you.
Where did you knock them? She used to sit in Johnny's store. Because I want to tell her that yes, I will take donations from Cora Corporation. I'm here on the streets, and I live in the city of Richmond. And I want to take leading mayor and city council. And I've been here, coming to this council meeting for forty-five years, and I've been on this side. So I decided that now I'm gonna sit over there on the daisies. But, it's too late. As long as I've been coming here, I've been hearing you guys, you have to have somebody, you need somebody young to go up on the daisies so they can learn different things that happens in the city and get them interested in what's going on. And get involved. So here's a chance for you to put your vote in your mouth, Rick. You have a young man that came up in spoke, Demless Johnson. He's in Richmond, he's been here all his life, he's went out and had his education and came back, and he's also involved in the community. Now, I know that I know that you guys won't appoint somebody else, and I know who that is. I don't know. Demless, give him a chance. So for that reason, I'm taking my name off of this. I'm sorry. I apologize to you guys. That's just stupid to sound like me. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Sembo Ramirez, I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Richmond. I'm here today to give my endorsement for Diego Garcia. Now, Diego Garcia is a true representative of the city of Richmond, tried and truly has done many things, which I've been involved with. I met Diego through his nephew Victor. Diego was leading community workshops, frequent community workshops, for members of the community to come out and learn life skills, and he shared experiences. And he's someone who I can consider a mentor. Now, there was a 5K that he and his nephew put together to raise money for back taxes and school supplies that I came to talk on a couple months ago. He was instrumental in helping that become a success. We raised over $6,000 for back taxes and school supplies for his family in Richmond. Not only that, you know, as he spoke earlier, he has his business, soccer league. Anytime myself or anyone else comes to him for information, mentorship, he's always willing to help us. Now, not that he's, you know, invaluable, no one is, but he's someone who I feel is the representation of the parts of Richmond that need representation the most. Now, there are parts that I feel like don't have that representation that he, and he will be able to bring back. Now, with him, it's not about what's convenient, what is in it for him, what he benefits from. With him, I know it is what is the right thing to do. So, when there's something, an issue that comes up, the question for him will be, is it the right thing to do? And that's the type of person we need to sit on the council. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Diego Garcia. I am a resident of the city of Richmond. Also, Diego Garcia is a non-fiscal political, and I feel that the city of Richmond lacks in what he could bring to the table. We heard a lot of people here talking about how we should do this, we should do that. Diego Garcia is a guy that has done this and has done that. He has worked with the community since he was a very young man. I still remember back in the days when he would take us into his house, and he would try to get all the kids in the community, just try to get them off the streets, and get them together and try to actually do something. Well, his type of work was more hands-on, and that's what we need in the city of Richmond. Like Sembo said, him and I organized a 5K once to try to get a raise funds by school backs for going for kids. And when we brought up the idea to Diego without any hesitation, he raised his hand and said, "I will help as much as I can." And with his communication skills and the people that he knows here in Richmond, as far as business owners, parents, just members of the community, people were able to make that event a huge success. And that just shows you how much connection he has with the community, how much work he has put in with the community. So that's the person we need here in the city council. Thank you.
Good evening, y'all. I'm here to tell you why I think Diego Garcia is a perfect candidate. Mr. Garcia is not just a person who lives in the city, he's an individual who loves and cares about the city. He has shown that with many years, he has volunteered and dedicated to Richmond. Mr. Garcia is loved and respected by many, he's a role model to many, especially youth. Leaders solve problems, leaders lead by example, leaders know when to listen, when to follow, leaders have ambitions. And I can probably say, Diego Garcia is a leader. Our city doesn't need more managers, they need leadership. Our city needs more people that care about our youth, that put our youth first. We have enough people that do a lot for our city, and it's all very appreciated. And thank you all for your service. But what about our youth? They are in the future. Stop and search. Diego Garcia for city council.
Mayor Council, Amelia Garcia. The next speaker is Miguel Morte. Before the following individuals, please come forward. Del Sol, Rocco, George Murka, David Chalmers, Larry Lewis, James Fratton, Kathy Robinson. Miguel Morte. Del Sol, Rocco. George Murka.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor and City Council, and my revolutionary Richmond residents. I identify with the comment that was made earlier, that we're in a revolution mode here. We wanna transform and redefine our city in a different way. My name is Jorge Hellemma, and Richmond is truly blessed to have so many qualified candidates for this open decision. I would say that the two most important criterias to select and evaluate people must include a consideration for equity and improved diversity on the city council and city operations. Of all the candidates before you, I believe Diego Garcia fits this critical criteria the best. A homegrown champion, a youth advocate, a resident who grew up in the flatlands of Richmond, familiar with the diversity and the adversity in our community. He's aware of diverse needs from different communities, not just ethnic communities, but different lifestyles. He himself is a person of color, representing one of the most underrepresented segments of our people in the city. Being a Mexican-American, a Latino, from a community that is getting close to forty-five percent of the residency here in Richmond, he can best represent not only that community, but because he's a multicultural person himself, identify where all the different needs in the city. He is articulate, well-spoken, a businessperson, a family man, a committed and involved resident, and in life's long, have a good view in social justice. He is ready. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, council, mayor, city manager, everybody. Everything's about balance between you guys, between the city, and how you operate. It doesn't work if everybody's in one camp or the other. You have to have a balance in everybody's needs. Richmond is, as I say, it's unbalanced, but we are culturally, we cover all, everybody, and that's what's beautiful. And we have to have someone sitting in that seat that can cause a little balance, and it's okay to have a little pushback, a little disagreement, and be vulnerable to have other people in there with different opinions. So, you have a lot of wonderful candidates come out tonight, and it's probably one of the harder things I can imagine a council have to do to put the burden on you all, not have the people get a choose who's here. So you have to keep that in consideration of the balance of the neighborhood and everybody's opinion for that. And I think David Cholto will be a strong candidate to help balance that out. You obviously saw the likeful heartness, the seriousness, so that's a nice balance between all of them. Good luck, and choose the right. Thanks. I'd like to start off by just saying, wow, I applaud you all for having to make this tough decision tonight. You guys have some great candidates to look at. But coming from town and having, working with young people since I was fourteen years old, whenever young people call me to support them, I come out. And my guy, Diego Garcia, invited me to come tonight. Demless Johnson invited me to come tonight and to support them, and I'm here to say I stand by them. I've worked with just about everybody that's running tonight, but particularly Diego, I've been working with him since he was a teenager. And that man, he's a real leader. He made some great decisions in his life, he's a good father, good businessman, just a good man in general, that just has a good, calm mind and make great decisions. So I support Diego and his opportunity and his challenges to run for city council. And then Demless, I've been working with Demless a while too. We took twenty-two youth to Washington DC, and he was just outstanding, being a great role model for young people. I gave him money to feed a group of young people that he was responsible for, and he managed that money to the T and actually came in under budget, unlike anyone else that I would put in charge of some money, to the penny. He brought back a bunch of money back, and I was like, how did you feed the kids? You brought back too much money. And he said, "We managed, we did a good job," and he was to the penny. I was surprised. So, I just thought, what an outstanding young man, and he was a great role model for the group. So I support Demless, and because he invited me to come out, I thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff. Forgiving us this opportunity, it's really a privilege. I'm here to speak on behalf of Marilyn Langley, who is part of the C. For the past ten years, I have gotten to know Marilyn through service as a member of the City Planning Commission and as one of her co-members on the Richmond Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. On the Planning Commission, Marilyn made sure our group of affected residents were given a voice to express our concerns. I was a member of a group, the group concerned about the impact of two residential developments on our shoreline. Marilyn asked the tough questions and also brought a lot of issues to light that were of our concern. And truly mostly, she gave us a voice. On the bicycle group, pedestrian advisory committee, she is exceptionally patient and helpful and generous, offering her insights and supporting all of us on the group, especially myself. I've been working hard to get a high school mountain bike racing team in Richmond, I've been working hard to get two hundred acres of the greenway converted into a mountain bike and a BMX bike and a Strider Bike facility, bike park for kids. And she's, all the way down the line, very supportive of that. I appreciate that. I've been on several organized bike rides with Marilyn, and we've always had a good time. She's an veteran biker. I think she wears her helmet better. With that, thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Josh Moss. Before the following individuals, please come forward. Rob Revert, Ariz, Jesse West, Gary Holba, Tim Lane, Marina Gonzalez, Megan Leckinger, Artis Morrison.
My name is Kathy Robinson. I'm here to not just speak for Marilyn. Marilyn has worked tirelessly for the city. She donates her money, she donates her time, she comes to everything. Her and Gail were twins on everything I ever get involved with. They're devoted, they work with every single community that we have, every race, every culture, on every activity. They're always there. She has volunteered so much time to make sure that this city's needs are met, and she needs to be on this council because we need someone with that kind of dedication, we need someone with that kind of involvement. She never thinks about how hard it's gonna be, or whether she should be at home resting or whatever, she just gets up and she goes. She was at the task force with us the whole time on Friday, and she's gone out with young visits. I believe that this city owes it to Marilyn to place her in that seat that Gail was leaving because Gail was the number one person. When people honored her the day she was leaving, every culture in the city came out and said Gail was there for them. Gail did this, and Gail did that. No other mayor, I've been in Richmond sixty-one years, has ever gotten that kind of recognition. And Marilyn is the exact same person. She cares about everybody, she gives of herself, and she's very nonpartisan. She does every single culture in the city, she's been at their vacant call whenever they needed her. And that's the kind of person we need sitting in that seat. I am asking that the council finally give Marilyn a seat on that platform, because she's always been here for everybody in the city, and that's the kind of person we must have. Because these are terrible times, everyone is struggling, and Marilyn knows how to fight the fight. And I really hope that you will finally allow her to take Gail's seat. Thank you.
Good words. It's nice to be back home, I gotta tell you, I've been gone for about two and a half years, and pretty much it's a perfect time to come back. What a group of people we have, it's just really, really impressive. I could hear a lot of people, among them two friends of mine, Diego and David, who I didn't expect to see tonight, but I have seen them, both of them are great folks. Of course, I'm here to support Marilyn. And everyone on this daisies knows, Marilyn has done the homework for all of us. I was on the planning commission for thirty and a half years, I was on the police commission for two, almost three years. I rely on Marilyn as each and every one of you have, because remember, she did the homework, she did the reading when none of us did, okay? Most are focused on one part of the general plan, which Marilyn authored, okay, or co-authored. The Chevron Modernization Project, there she was again. She read every part of that, she shared everybody that, she dotted all the i's, she crossed all the d's. You could not, you couldn't have a better person. She knows how to govern, she is the one, and I think we all know it, she's done for each of you, and she's done for me. She has always answered my calls for the Latinos, every single time. But let's go back to 2004, the March for Education, kind of worse started at all, right? It was the March of Education, she chronicled a ninety-day march for seventy-five, eighty miles to Sacramento, and she spoke about that, about releasing those monies for us. She chronicled every day of that, and that's where I met Marilyn, a long time ago, and she has been there ever since. So, I'm here to ask you to support her, is it the right thing to do? She needs a place in that daisies, she's earned it, she should have been in there years ago. Please consider Marilyn. Thank you.
So, my name is Jesse West, I've been around town around forty years, and I just don't like the way things are going. I think we're all tired of all the anger and accusations and mistrust in this town, which sadly is often echoed by the current city council. We're alienated from each other, and I think we have to heal, we need to heal. I'd like you to choose someone for the council who is not polarizing, who doesn't come with divisive baggage and a preconceived agenda, but who gets along well with everyone and is focused on problem solving. Someone who's shown they can build alliances, not controversies. I believe David Cholto fits that bill. Dave's agenda is simple, he wants to help people and to improve our town. Listening, Javaka? He's worked hard on everything, from neighborhood issues to education to economic development. He's been effective and has the results to prove it. Dave respects and gets along well with people, and he listens with an open, thoughtful mind to their concerns. Then he brings people together and he forges collaboration, he inspires others to get involved. David Cholto is running for a purpose, and that purpose is to give back to the city he loves. With enthusiasm, I support Dave Cholto for a seat on the city council, and I'm not just saying that because he gives me chocolate ice cream. So, thank you, and vote wisely.
Good evening, I am Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager, staff members. I'm Eric Robin, I'm a resident of Richmond, I'm a president of the Richmond Tennis Association, and treasurer for the Point Richmond Neighborhood Council, and I'm here to speak in support of David Cholto's candidacy for city council. I've gotten to know Dave very well with his economic developments with the Point Richmond Business Association, and more recently with his role on the Neighborhood Council. So I could briefly talk about three attributes I think Dave really could bring to the council. First is enthusiasm and humor, it's a little bit of that, but his enthusiasm and energy is infectious, and it really affects everybody around him. He really helps everyone see difficult issues and finding solutions. Very enthusiastic, he has a lot of energy in how he actually does that. Second attribute is creativity. Dave is a very creative thinker, as I saw in some of the work with the Neighborhood Council. But that gets me to the third one, that was collaboration. But Dave listens very well, spoken to his left ear, he's gonna do that. But seriously, David has been very good at taking tough issues and then bringing them together in Neighborhood Council. We haven't always agreed, okay? But David would first tell you, we don't always agree, but we always be able to work it through fairly quickly, like say, one of the rational issues is to speak the level ahead of it. So I think David really brings that. I think one of the questions he has is, you know, kind of this philosophy, et cetera. And one of the things I would say about Dave is, you can't label him as a conservative, progressive, liberal, and any of those labels, but you can label him as a Richmonder and a collaborator. He really is somebody who works together, brings people together to get things done, just like Jesse mentioned. I've seen it in action, I'm sure he can really do that above the city council, so I urge you to vote for Dave. Thank you.
Good evening. Marina Gonzalez. Megan Leckinger. Hello, honorable Mayor Bud and distinguished council members. I ask you to consider David Cholto's application to fill the city council member vacancy. I am Megan Leckinger. I work in Richmond, my children attend school in Richmond. I was the first vice president of the Point Richmond Neighborhood Council, and for some time acting president. I was the president of the PRAM. I volunteer in the community, including the Greater Richmond Interfaith Program. To sum that up, I'm not running for council, but to sum that up, I don't just have an address in Richmond, I live in Richmond. When you live here, when you volunteer in Richmond, it's hard not to run into David Cholto. David is a family man, he's an entrepreneur and business owner. David is the president of the Point Richmond Neighborhood Council, he's the driving force behind the Picnic in the Point event. David is a board member of the Richmond Chamber of Commerce, YMCA East Bay, and Mayor's Community Fund. David was the Point Richmond Business Association president for six years. David is a man of action. David shows his character through service. So, again, honorable Mayor Bud and distinguished council members, I ask you to consider David's application seriously. I support David because frankly, he's the type of person I want my children to be. Tined, selfless, generous with his time, accepting of others, no matter their race, gender, or economic steps. David Cholto is exactly the city leader we need. So, no matter your affiliation, consider, I would seek you to choose the right person for the vacancy. I want the best people leading the city with pride and purpose. Please choose David Cholto, and thank you. It's time for my bed. Goodnight.
Our next speaker is Artis Morrison. Before the following individuals, please come forward. Ray Mandrou, Zach Blair, Karen Deena Potts, White Parker, Chris Culver, and Juan Sanchez. Artis Morrison.
Tonight, it feels nice to see all the candidates, the diversity, the greatness of people of the city of Richmond, and to hear about all the skill set that these individuals have. Having said that, I am here because I'm impressed and up on to support two people that I've heard tonight. One is Demless Johnson, the third, and the other one is Mr. Garcia. I'm very impressed by both of those young men, and I think they can do the city well. There were some candidates tonight, they have already ran for public office, and the people of Richmond said they don't want them, because the process that all of you who are here tonight went through, you raised money, however you raised money, whether you got a million dollars from a hundred thousand people or a corporation gave you money, you matriculated through the process, you won the election. When we have some, they are unelective, the people don't want them.
When we have some, they are unelectable, the people don't want them. They voted twice for us not to have them. We have, we have others, there was another gentleman, he's qualified, the last gentleman that spoke. But if this went to a runoff and there were two seats, and I had to vote for two people on a card, if all twelve of them was on a card and there was two seats, I would vote for Demlis Johnson III, or I would vote for Mr. Garcia. Thank you.
My name is Zach Burke, and I'm a Richmond resident. Yeah, I think, I think what happened tonight is actually pretty significant, because I think it showed us, you know, how the grassroots energy of Richmond continues to change in ways that many of us maybe almost barely expect. And empowering young leaders of color is almost never an easy or obvious choice to make. There, I think there are reasons why the Richmond Progressive Alliance and members of the community endorsed Ada Rosinos. It's because she shows warmth and respect and generosity and good judgment on a consistent basis in such a way that has touched many people already in Richmond, as well as as a community organizer, where she has delivered effective outcomes for working people, and especially women of color. You know, I think, you know, there's another characteristic that I think she's shown tonight that's really critical in a leader, and that's vulnerability. You know, she expressed, you know, hey, I feel a little dizzy right now. And I think in this era that we're entering in our national politics, we really need our leaders to show vulnerability, and show their ability to authentically connect with each other as neighbors. And Ada has already demonstrated that as a community organizer, she is a vital asset in bringing people out of the shadows in our community and getting them engaged in our government and how it works. And so I think, you know, I'm relieved there. You know, I think that, you know, this evening, a lot of really amazing candidates have brought themselves in front of the council, and I respect your judgment. Thank you.
Thank you for having me speak. Thank you for everybody who stayed. My name is Cara De La Paz, and I worked with, I'm here to support Diego Garcia. I think he is the best candidate. I've lived here for twenty years. I was, first met him as a neighbor in the Iron Triangle, and together we collaborated doing different things for the kids in our community. And then later became a colleague with him at Grant Elementary School in Richmond, California. And that was in nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and four. And he started an incredible program. I was an outreach coordinator at the time. But what he did is brought parents on campus that either had a bad school experience as children, and we worked together to build a safe environment through the Twenty First Century Grant at Grant Elementary School. And from that, I'm going to say that a lot of the people here tonight, I'm humbled by how incredible the people that have come for. But in my heart, as a mom, as a participant in the Wisconsin County Unified School District, see that one thing about Diego is he's incredibly humble, and though he might have not held a political position on the council, pretty much everybody here in this surrounding community does know Diego. He was pre-social media, getting, knocking on door to door, helping kids. He started the Richmond Soul community, as you probably all know. And he's so innovative, not necessarily with money, as some people have the capacity to give, as well as he's volunteer and participate in planning. But Diego, at one point, some parents didn't have the money to participate in the soccer league. He actually went and bought the materials to make soccer uniforms. And then the first year, thank you, everyone, for letting me speak. And again, I just want to say that Diego Garcia is the best candidate for Richmond.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Juan Sanchez, and I'm here to support Ada Rosinos. From the time that we decided to move here, Ada was always interested in finding ways in which she could get connected with the community. And surely enough, it didn't take that long, and she was able to get appointed into the HR, HRC, and work with other community, with other organizations within the community. And that's not something that just started, that like a light bulb just flashed when moving here. She's been doing it from the five plus years that I've known her. She's always involved in the community. And it's really hard for me to be up here speaking publicly, because I'm a software developer, and I hide behind a computer every single day. But those people that know one of us, he knows, know that she moves them, and that she inspires them to do things that they're not able to do. And so it is because of her and the courage of seeking this position that I am here supporting her. But other people that know her also know that she is courageous, she is empathetic, and she is productive. And if she is to be elected, elected, she will represent the people because she is of the people. She comes from a family that has to hold on weekend outings, because on Tuesdays is unlimited bowling for one dollar. And I know what that show looks like. And that's why I support Ada Rosinos. Thank you.
Next two candidates, David Chauvelin, David Chauvelin. Will Folling Individuals, please come forward. Tarnal Abbott, Kabir, Ashton Hugis, Marcy Rahaski, Sonia Rivas, and Susan Hydrow. Good evening. Tarnal Abbott, Richmond resident. I'm speaking myself. I urge you, Marilyn and I, once to fill the city council seat. There is a reason why SEIU Ten Twenty-One Hope members, the ACE Action members, and the RPA members, all voted Marilyn as their number one choice. That's because we know that she, through her fifteen years of dedicated service to our city as a community member, her work on the planning commission, and her work as an aide in the Mayor of McLaughlin's office, we know that she is best able to navigate city business as an effective advocate for the people of Richmond. The negative campaigns that others run should not swing you. This has been done in the past, and it's been defeated in the past, and it will be defeated in the future. This city is very likely going to be facing hard financial decisions that will affect all of us. Marilyn is uniquely qualified because she knows how the city works and how to get the answers she needs in order to make decisions. She has the intelligence, experience, and heart to make real progress happen in this city. We love, we want the best for Richmond. So please support Marilyn and put her on the seat. Thank you.
State council members, my name is Kier Kabur. I'm a Richmond resident. I grew up in Richmond. I'm very proud of being in town. I'm supporting Ada Rosinos for the seat over the last eight, ten months I've gotten to know you, you are the city council. And I've gotten to know you in a way, and talk about politics, and talk about politics in a way that I trust what you stand for. When I talk with Ada that way, I feel the same way. I feel I can trust her in what she believes in, that she cares, that she'll represent me as a young person of color of the city. I believe the revolution needs to be led by young people of color. I want everyone at the table, but I want the revolution led by, especially young people of color. And that's what I want the revolution led by. And I support Ada for the seat. I feel like she represents high values on that, and I don't see there, I believe that. I feel, I feel I will be most represented by her at that seat. I hope that you vote for her, thank you.
You got it. Hi, everyone. Great to be here. What an amazingly powerful night with incredible candidates. I really enjoyed this process. I'm here in support of David Chauvelin. I actually am the business coach that he hired, and what a, what a treat to hear the feedback of people that have gotten to know him over the years since he moved into the service businesses he has. When I first started working with him, I interviewed a number of people that worked with him, and they, some did not have very favorable things to say. And through that, through the process of coaching, one of the people that was his direct force actually asked him to mentor him. So I know that David is a man that is dedicated to change, to being the change, not just making external changes. And I think that that's an incredible way to model how we can improve the city of Richmond, is that we all, together, how can we evolve and change ourselves. I know that it's fun to see how he, in each one of you, has evoked the love of ice cream. And I'm also glad to, that he actually didn't end up opening an ice cream shop, that he's actually, like moved, like bigger into the role of service. When we were working together, he hit a stumbling block where the, even though he was one of the top salespeople, he was selling a new product and got uninspired, didn't know how to evoke a new base of execution with his, with selling his product. And then we shifted the awareness that selling is service, and that just sparked this whole new era for him of like being a service. So I'm really so excited to see him walk this path of service, and we'll see what you guys choose, and I trust he'll be in service throughout his life. Thank you.
Sonia Rivas.
Good evening. I'm Susan Hydrow from Richmond. I have to say, I'm rather disheartened and dismayed by the recent attacks on Marilyn. Same kind of me and uncalled for. Who among us in a progressive community in Richmond doesn't have something in our background that one could raise an eyebrow at? Many of us have spoken out loudly at times, demonstrated, protested, even gotten arrested. President for company, excepted, of course. Maybe, maybe Mayor Butt has an exception also. You know, in my day, Jane Fonda got absolutely crucified for going to the Annoyed during the Vietnam War. Yet she didn't turn out to be a communist, did she? Actually, she went on to do some pretty impressive work for the disadvantaged. I'm supporting Marilyn for the council because I know her to be extremely intelligent, very experienced, eminently qualified, and most important, deeply compassionate and caring for the people of Richmond. Please appoint her to the council. She's earned it.
Next two candidates, Will Folling Individuals, please come forward. Michael Cervantes, Steve Graves, Jeff Shojie, Cecilia Lucas, Mark Torres, and Wendy Garzalis. Michael Cervantes.
Michael is in the audience. Sorry, I don't hear his name.
Michael Cervantes?
No.
Michael Cervantes?
Right.
Mayor, I'm Mr. Cervantes, and I'm the chairman of the Richmond Progressive Alliance. So I just came to the idea that in organization, we went through a whole process to elect candidates to fill the seat for the city council. I think we have a lot of applicants, including some of the people that came today and to present themselves. So the Richmond Progressive Alliance, for the first time, is reaching towards other members that are not RPA members. So I think in this way, you want to know if there are other activists out there that can qualify for the seat. So the Richmond Progressive Alliance, we decided after interviews, multiple interviews, and then recommended a jury committee, then a general vote for the general membership of the RPA, to endorse Marilyn as the number one, Ada Rosinos as the number second, and then Diego Rivera for number three. So I'm Diego Garcia, sorry. Diego Garcia. So for the first time, we recognize members of the community that are allies for the issues that the RPA fights for in our community. So please, and talk to me about our three candidates for the city council. Thank you very much.
Michael Cervantes. Cecilia Lucas. Mark Torres.
Good evening, city council. My name is Wendy Gonzalez. I'm a Richmond resident, former Human Rights Relations Commissioner, former teacher, currently a principal in the Wisconsin County Unified School District. I wish there were three seats, because there are some candidates that I feel very strongly should be on there. I'm here today, however, to support Diego Garcia. First met Diego in two thousand and six, when we were doing massive organizing for immigrant rights. Diego led that effort, and together we were able to see a demonstration of thousands of people in Richmond, beginning in San Antonio, Richmond. Same way, Diego and the grassroots organizing, the very good of the community. I, since then, I've worked out with Diego on various issues. He has sat on many, on different commissions, as you all know. He, he's not a politician. Richmond, he's not a politician. They need people out there working in the community, with the people, bringing in a whole nother set of constituents that have been marginalized through the process here in Richmond. And he is the person who is bringing in communities. He is the bridge that will bring together the one Richmond again, because we need that bridge, because Richmond is divided. And Diego has the drive, the passion to do all that. He's real. He will keep it real. He will seek out, if he doesn't know, he will seek out the answers. Diego, he's already reached out to me, we've already had conversations and we're to education in our community, wanting to replicate what the city of San Pablo has done with their community schools initiative, and getting involved with our community, and pumping resources to our youth in our community schools to make sure that they're getting what they want. I'm speaking as an educator, because that's what I do in my professional life. But I know Diego on many different issues. But I know Diego on many different issues and I think he is someone that needs to be in that seat. Not saying that our young people of color that are also trying to come in and work with our communities, thank you also, you know, Marilyn, I've worked with her on martial education, the strides of basketball education. But right now, we need someone like Diego on that in the ranks.
Alicia Correll? If you're following individuals, please come forward. Alhambra Rivas, Maria Logos, BK Woods, Jennifer Benda, Patricia Ponse, and Rob Leiner. Alicia Correll?
Hi, my name is Alejandro Rivas and I'm here to support my uncle, Diego Garcia. He's an amazing person. He's done so much for the city. For over 20 years, he's helped and worked with the community directly. He's created many youth groups, active school programs. He went on to create Richmond Soul and that soccer league I took part of, and it served over 300 families. That's a lot of people. And it wasn't just a soccer league, it was another home for the youth. And it helped them a lot, it created opportunities, it followed their passion. A lot of people got pretty good stuff out of it. And nine years, he served on the Parks and Recreation Commission. He was able to do many things with the youth. Just that's something that we really need because we're the next generation. We're, we're going to be representing Richmond, we're going to be helping out. So it's good that he was able to do that. He grew up in Richmond, he's, he grew up on the streets and he knows what it's like. And that's why a lot of us resonate with him. And he's able to get through to a lot of us, unlike a couple other people. So the things he's interested in will benefit us a lot, especially the schools and all of that. And he's invested so much in our community, working harder on our generation and making sure that we can become great people. And based on all of the things he's done and his accomplishments and how far he's come in the 40 years of him living here, I believe that he's the best candidate to fill this position. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody and everybody in the crowd. I'm Greg, I'm all good and great. I'm here to speak on behalf of David Schellenthal. Interesting that I've been sitting here, this is not a Richmond native, border raised, parts of the South Side, grew up out here, from UC Berkeley, now I'm teaching my doctor there. And in listening to David talk, it reminds me of participatory democracy style of leadership that El Baker influenced. But you don't have to be so outspoken to actually get work done. And it's interesting that like a lot of the work that's getting done, we all saw Talia Sauer, that's my grandmother. And I know David through working with my grandmother. I know him from behind the scenes. And behind the scenes, a lot of the activism that's funded, that comes down to trips to all the communities in Richmond, outside of all, I heard you guys, ice cream, not too many of us in Richmond actually make the porkers. Not too many of us get down to porkers and eat some of that delicious rump or even ice cream, chocolate ice cream. But a lot of the money that makes it to the organization that make it possible to do the work come from behind the scenes for people like David, actually getting the money secured to get the work done. So activism is not to be activated without being funded. And if it's not funded, somebody behind the scenes with a call, and that's the something that's also being dismissed in these conversations. His seemingly meekness actually is beneficial to actual coalition building. Somebody has to be the calm amongst the chaos. And if you have somebody that actually has the abilities to be calm and actually present their credentials, not necessarily has to be passionately done. Because passion should not always, if we're just going by passion, then we're, then we're making the mistake of choosing leadership from personality. And right now, President of the United States chose to do his personality primarily outside of his politics. So that's all I have to say.
Jennifer Benda? Patricia Ponse? Rob Leiner?
Hello, my name is Patricia Ponse and I am here in support of Diego Garcia for appointment to the city council. I know Diego Garcia from Richmond High. We went to high school together. And in my wildest dreams, that I ever imagined standing here in city council, supporting him for a city council. Why? Because growing up, engaging in our community was not a priority. That was something unseen, something unheard of. They grew up and now our young leaders of today are growing up, wanting to be engaged in our community. And that's where Diego Garcia comes in. He is passionate about helping our youth become the best that they can be and helping them engage in our communities and helping them flourish to the best of their abilities. In Richmond, a big segment of the population is underrepresented. If Diego Garcia is appointed, that population will be represented along with every segment of the population. I can guarantee that. Diego is a great communicator. He brings everybody to the table and his leadership is beyond anything I can, I can put and write in words. He's family oriented. He, he's a great role model for the community. And I know that you guys know that. And so I'm just here speaking on that tonight. So please don't undermine his ability and capability. He's again, a great community leader. But not only that, behind Diego Garcia, there's a lot of community leadership that are supporting him tonight. A lot of them have left for the day because this is a long process and a lot of them are committed. I am one of them. When it becomes tall, this is another one. And there's many more in the community. And I urge you to do the best you can for the city. Diego Garcia is the best city. Thank you very much.
I'm Rob Leiner. I'm starting a business in a few months here. You guys always go this late? This is pretty late. So I'm, I'm here in support of Dave Schellenthal. When we have to listen to, have to listen to all these presentations and the intelligence and the leadership and the passion, feeling really good about Richmond. I think it has a incredibly bright future. When we decided to look at our business in Richmond, Dave Schellenthal was one of the first people we met. And his energy, which you've seen now, which everyone knows, is amazing. And we thought, boy, if everyone in Richmond is like this, this is, this was the right place. This was a great place for us. Dave, I was thinking about what I should say. He demonstrated with his, with his presentation, some of the words in support of him also echoed it. He's got energy, he's got enthusiasm, he's got incredible optimism. This combined with his business experience, with his community service, position him very well to be a public servant. He's also incredibly empathetic. It sounded like you guys have all talked to him for a long time. He says, how are you? What can I do for you? I appreciate you. He really is concerned about the other person, doesn't care about bringing attention to himself. He really wants to work for the betterment of the community. So, you know, he cares about social justice, he cares about economic justice, diversity, and I believe he will apply his, again, incredible energy and optimism.